Thank you all and welcome to the Pembroke Pines City Commission meeting of October 16th, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Good.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Schwartz.
Happy to be here.
Mayor Castillo.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
I'm here.
We have Goran.
Today, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and to sing our national anthem is Ava Alamon, who's a junior at Marjory Stoneman Douglas and a member of Rising Stars whenever you are ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we went At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Wow. That's Ava Alamon from Marjory Stoneman Douglas and Rising Stars. Thank you so very, very much. Madam Clerk, announcement of items to be pulled from the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Item number eight was pulled by administration.
Item number eight. Thank you very much. Okay. Good evening. It is now my pleasure and honor on behalf of my colleagues and the commission, the entire city of Pembroke Pines, to make a very special presentation. The key to our city is not given lightly. It represents the highest honor that the city can award to a person or organization symbolizing our recognition and gratitude for their ability to rise to the highest level of achievement. I'd like now to call upon Ellis, Kendall Ellis, who we're so proud of to receive today our Pembroke Pines key to the city. Now, I know you're gonna, have a seat, please. I know you're gonna rise in a second. Again, let me tell you why we're doing this. Just to give a brief summary of our outstanding, of her outstanding athletic career for everyone. Kendall, the reigning U.S. 400-meter champion and relay specialist. Is a two-time Olympian representing the United States of America. Her first trip to the Olympics was in Tokyo in 2020, where she won the gold medal for the four-by-400-meter relay. And a bronze medal for the four-by-400-meter relay mixed. She most recently represented the United States this year in Paris Olympics. Her athletic career of winning awards and championships dates back to 2015. There was a particular win at the 2018 NCAA Championships that made Kendall something of a mini legend when she made up 330 meters over the last home stretch to lead Southern California University to win the four-by-400 relay. It is, it is competitive, her competitive drive, drive and relay prowess that has made her the champion she is today. We are proud to say that Kendall Ellis was born in Pembroke Pines. Her very proud parents, Wanda and Sam Ellis, if they could draw near. Are they here? Our residents of Pembroke Pines as well. Kendall is a Pembroke Pines resident up until college, attending the Pembroke Pines Charter Elementary and Pembroke Pines Charter Middle School West campuses. She graduated from St. Thomas Aquinas High School in 2014, the University of Southern California in 2017, and DeVry Keller Graduate School in 2021 with a master's in business administration. You are an inspiration to the city of Pembroke Pines and on behalf of all 171,000 residents and everyone seated here, it is my honor. You can hold on to this. We don't do this off. To present you with the key to the city of Pembroke Pines. Keep it somewhere safe. It opens all the doors. Ladies and gentlemen, Pembroke Pines resident, homegrown here, right here in our city, and Olympic champion Kendall Ellis, we're so proud of you. Commissioner Schwartz, if you would join me, please. This is the proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines proclaiming Chamber Day. Thank you, Mayor, and if I have the chamber come on down. Come on down.
Vice Mayor, if you'd join us as well.
Proclamation, City Pembroke Pines Chamber Day. Whereas the Chamber of Commerce strives to address the community's top challenges and greatest opportunities through bold leadership and innovative problem solving, and whereas chambers of commerce foster stronger, more vibrant communities by advocating for priorities to promote economic prosperity, boost quality of life, and create access to meaningful employment and opportunity for all residents.
Whereas Chamber of Commerce creates catalytic community partnerships to build resilient economies and promote community-wide prosperity. And whereas established in 1969, the Miramar Pembroke Pines Regional Chamber of Commerce is the premier business organization serving southwest Broward County and is made up of 800 members, is thriving, and is committed to helping business thrive.
Now therefore, I Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, do hereby proclaim October 16th, 2024 as Chamber Day in the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, and encourage all residents and businesses to learn more about the Chamber, its impact to support and support of local businesses. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for the city leadership for giving us this. This is actually a testament how we work with the city, the partnership that we have, and how we continue having the same vision of making this city better than ever before.
Mayor, I hear that, I think we printed this yesterday, and now they have eight more members as of today, roughly 8:29. Thank you so very, very much. This is the proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines proclaiming National Red Ribbon Week. National Red Ribbon Week. Try saying that 10 times.
Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug and those that traffic it in them. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique C. Camarena, in a Drug Enforcement Administration agent, who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas October 23rd to 31 has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment.
Now therefore, I Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2024 as National Red Ribbon Week in the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, and urge all citizens to join me in this special observance. Congratulations. Thank you so much and thank you for your service.
Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners Rodriguez and Hernandez, if you would join me, please. This is the proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, declaring National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is the period from September 15th to October 15th in the United States when people recognize the contributions of Hispanic and Latino-Americans. And whereas the 2024 Hispanic Heritage Month theme is "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together," the theme encapsulates the spirit of innovation, resilience, and the unity that defines the Hispanic experience. Today, 62.1 million people, or 18.9% of the American population, are of Hispanic or Latino origin. And whereas each year, Americans celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And September 15th is a significant, is significant because it is the anniversary of independence of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Day on September 16th and September 18th.
And whereas the observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15 and ending on October 15. It was enacted into law on August 17, 1988. And whereas Hispanic have had a profound and positive influence on our country and the city of Pembroke Pines, through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service, they have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community.
Now therefore, I Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the super sabroso city of Pembroke Pines, along with the city commission, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2024 to October 15th, 2024 as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Pembroke Pines. Que viva la hispanidad! All right. Which one do you want to do first? This one?
District one. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, as we've continued this tradition every month, recognizing a great yard in our community, this month we're here to recognize District One and Ms. Ms. Allen Siegel, can you come on up?
Oh, wow.
So Mayor, Ms. Siegel lives in Pasadena Pool Homes, and as you can see on the screen, she's just got a absolutely wonderful yard, and she really is the embodiment of what this ward means, and we're happy to recognize her this month. Thank you so much.
Wow. On behalf of the city. It is our pleasure and honor to present you with the Natalie Valmonte Great Yard Award for District One, and it comes with a $50 gift certificate to Home Depot. Do you want to say a few words?
Well, I'd like to thank my yard guy. Why, David, all I do is drive by and look at it.
That is just perfect. So you're gonna give him the 50 bucks? Ladies and gentlemen, the Natalie Valmonte Award winner for District One. Thank you so very much. We love your yard.
Mayor, we'll be back next month with District Two's winner, and I encourage everybody to look at the QR code on the screen. If you have a great yard or you know a great yard, please nominate your great yards in the city of Pembroke Pines. Love to be able to recognize you. Thank you.
The city of great yards, make that nomination, okay? Okay. This is fire prevention. Yes, sir, you're on.
It's on?
Yeah. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Dodge, Mayor Castillo, commissioners and city administrators. My name is Brian Attina. I'm the Assistant Fire Marshal for Pembroke Pines Fire Rescue. Since 1992, the National Fire Protection Association has sponsored the public observance of Fire Prevention Week. Fire Prevention Week is the longest-running public health observance in our country, and during this time, children, adults, and teachers share and learn safety practices to keep our communities safe. This year's theme was about smoke alarms, but in an effort to further our swimming safety and drowning prevention program, we changed the theme to "A Cool Pool is a Safe Pool." This year, children from kindergarten to fifth grade at our local schools submitted hundreds of posters and dioramas for this traditional fire department contest. I am excited and it is my honor to announce and present the awards to our first through third place winners of this year's contest. As the children hear their names, please stand up and come to the podium to receive your award from our fire chief, Marcelino Rodriguez. Okay, so listen up, guys. For first place for kindergarten, we have Isabella Gomez Toro. Parents and kids, just so you know, at the very end, we're gonna have a big group photo with the mayor and the commissioners over here, okay? So if you want to take quick pictures, that's fine, but you can hold them all to the end. Second place for kindergarten is Deiani Prince Fredericks. Third place kindergarten is Riley Kathian. So first place for first grade, we have Samir Ibrahim. Second place in first grade, we have Maximiliano Gallo. In third place in first grade, we have Valerie Romero. For first place in second grade, we have Kaylin Esquivari. For second place in second grade, we have Mathias Caio. Third place, second grade, Xavier Rosa. In third grade and first place, we have Mia Costa. Second place in third grade, we have Miranda Lanes. In third grade and third place, we have Leah Chen. First place in fourth grade, Zoe Brown. In second place for fourth grade, we have Christopher Londano. I don't, I don't believe Christopher's here. Okay, he's not here. Third place, we have Levi Roberts. Yeah, that's Levi. For first place in fifth grade, we have Jeremy Basuto.
Blessing.
Start over. In second place, we have Olivia Menteses. Okay, so we're gonna take a group photo over here on the left, left, right side. Sorry. Commissioners, anyone want to join us, please? And Sparky, the dog showed up.
It's Sparky, wow. We have a second dying command ready for you next year. Thank you so much. That was. Any public speakers, Deborah? Deborah? Any public speakers? You tell them, I think. They have pity on, yeah. Okay, we're returning to the city commission meeting. If we can please have order in the chamber. Thank you so very much. Congratulations to all you beautiful young people. Thank you for keeping us safe from fire. Thank you and good night. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any items at the request of the public?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Commission order to report?
No, Mayor.
Appeals to Board Adjustment Decisions?
None, Mayor.
Announcement of Board and Committee Appointments?
None, Mayor.
Commissioners, today's consent agenda consists of items one through eight. What is your pleasure? Eight was pulled, excuse me, one through seven. What is your pleasure? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Is there any discussion on items one through seven? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show the motion passage unanimously. Quiesce judicial consent, ordinance of resolution, second reading ordinance, first reading ordinance, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, good evening. Items number nine through sixteen are all proposed charter amendments to the city's charter, beginning with item number nine. Assistant City Attorney Quentin Morgan and Assistant City Attorney Michael Cirillo will take the front seat with your permission, Mayor and Commission, to assist. As you probably know, Quentin was the attorney sitting with the Charter Board for the year that they met in preparation for their report, which is issued at the last meeting. The first item, which is item number nine, I'm gonna be reading titles and several are, they're somewhat long, but you'll bear with me, please.
Before you begin?
Yes, Mayor.
The, uh, the plan, Commissioners, unless there's an objection, in which case we're gonna need a motion, is to put all of these charter review items on for the March election. Is there any objection?
I object.
Okay. Would you like to make another motion?
Uh, yes, I'd like to strike the language in all the ordinance proposed to not include March twenty twi- twenty twenty-five election.
Okay, is there a second to that?
So would we be able to talk about them and if we make a decision, put it in March?
No, he, he wants to do it in November, I guess.
No, I, did I say that, Mayor? I didn't say that. I said I'm gonna strike it from March of 2025. The content of the rest of the, of the proposal, um, you know, we can certainly have discussion with, but if I may, I may expand a little bit since Commissioner Rodriguez asked. We just got out of-
First, I need a second to the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I guess I just want a second just to get a quick clarification-
Okay.
-on that part.
Sure. Back in May, we met in a workshop. I expressed my concerns about being off-cycle. We've never had a, an election in an odd year in March in Pembroke Pines.
That's untrue. We had one in 2005.
In March?
Yes. It was a bond issue.
In March? You sure that wasn't in August?
No. In March. Is, is there any other point?
Okay, so we'll, we'll verify March of, of 2005, okay? The voters aren't expecting an election. We just had a, a workshop today about communication and the fact that the city has to improve on its outreach of communication. Now, we haven't had the full workshop on what communication is, but we all recognize that the, um, the ability for us to do enough outreach is, um, is gonna be quite difficult. We have an election that's scheduled in the city, March of 2026. Um, I see nothing in, that's being proposed, uh, that is of great urgency, that can't be handled by the electorate or a charter change our city's constitution during a normal cycle. So for the, for those reasons, um, I, I can't support, um, the first reading if the March 2025 proposal remains in each one of these ordinances.
Well, can I, can I just say, we were kind of just told in that same workshop that there's very little we can do anyways because there, we have preambulations and restrictions on us about what we can spend taxpayer funds on.
Okay, so on that point, we can, we, we're not allowed to advocate, but we can educate. A significant change to our charter requires, uh, one, effective communication out to the public, two, the most amount of people possible to make those changes. I would feel, um, horrible if we had a turnout of less than five percent. We know historically, in, uh, the even year, the districts one and four, uh, commission races, uh, there are typically no more than eight percent turnout. In districts two, three, and the, and the mayor's seat are typically greater than twenty-eight percent. We know that in November, which we have an election coming up for District Four, this is gonna be the first time that we're gonna see over seventy-five percent participation. The city's charter is our constitution. I wanna be able to present the voters with the, uh, the most amount of voters with the information that we have guided. I don't believe statistically that a five percent turnout is, uh, is representative of what, of what the general population, uh, of the city would want. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much set on, on that position. I will be voting against the ordinances if the 2025 language remains for these items.
Um, I, it's, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, Commissioner's proposal is to wait, uh, nineteen months before, before the work of the Charter Board is presented to the voters, uh, and I can't support that. It is the responsibility of every voter to go to every election, uh, that is called. And because of the rules of the supervisory elections, we no, we no longer even, we used to have three opportunities to present our business to the people, one in March, one in, uh, August and one in November. Historically, that has been the case. In fact, I can't think of, other than the one that we're about to have, when we have ever had an item on, on the ballot in November. Cities, uh, place their items on the ballot in March and, um, uh-
That would've been, that would've been the charter of 2012, Mayor. That's when we had the last, I think we had about twelve questions, March, uh, November of 2012.
Well, maybe, may, may, maybe I've, uh, maybe I've, uh, forgotten that. However, uh, I think that the work, uh, to, uh, improve the charter and to move the city forward should not wait, uh, simply because, uh, some people choose not to, uh, vote in March. They are, we've done our responsibility by calling a charter board. The Charter Board has done their responsibility by presenting us with options. We've done our responsibility by, um, uh, discussing those options and boiling them down to resolution-
A point of order, I don't believe we have done our, our work because this item, these items-
That's not a point of order.
Well, then a point of clarification.
What's your point, what is your question?
Mayor, you, you deferred the item. We had the opportunity, the, the City Attorney provided us a memo at the very first meeting, the organizational meeting of this year.
I'm, I'm gonna stop you there because that's not, that's not a point of clarification to the motion.
Okay, then, then-
Your motion, your motion is to have this election in November of 2026, correct?
No, I, that's not what my motion was. My mo- my motion is to strike having a March 2025 election for charter. That's what my motion is, sir.
Is, and, and is that the motion that you seconded, Commissioner? Or, or did you, did you think it was another motion?
No, in a ch- in a chance to clarify, if it was an open-ended and, sorry, if it was an open-ended, um, like, we can discuss it and then decide if this March or another March at another, like, peer, point of time. That was what I thought.
All right. I, uh, I, I can't support your motion, Commissioner. I see no point at all of waiting nineteen months to, uh, make the corrections to the charter that have been proposed. March of, uh, 2025 gives us ample time to present the, the items to the people of the city of Pembroke Pines, have them deliberate upon it and vote it. Uh, and I reiterate to you, it is the responsibility of every voter to vote in every election. They have no greater responsibility to vote in November than they do in March or than they do in August. And I think that it's our responsibility to place the business of the city before the people of the city, um, as quickly as we can. So I'm, I'm not gonna support-
That's fine, Mayor, you don't have to support my motion, but, but what I, what I, what I do have to put on the record is that the City Attorney gave, uh, four commissioners at the first meeting of, of April, a specific letter giving the Charter Review Board's opportunity to hit on this year's November ballot. It was deferred. You had stated that you wanted to wait until we had a fifth commissioner before deciding this issue. This is not a delay on our, uh, on, on my part. I was prepared-
No one's, no one's stating the year delay.
I was prepared, I was prepared to have this ballot language on this November's election, but that was not, that opportunity was not given to me to vote for-
First of all, first, stop. First of all, I did not do that. We do things together, okay? I may have had that point of view, but we do things together. The item is before us now, and I've simply stated my view, Commissioner. I disagree with you.
It, it's not nineteen months.
Okay.
So we can disagree.
Okay.
We can disagree on, on how it got here, but it's not a delay that was, the, the commission, this commission-
Right.
Uh, had every opportunity to have this item on this coming November fifth.
Okay.
And, and it was discussed at the May workshop, when this item was brought up, when Commissioner Hernandez was sworn in, and the clock ran out. We still had an opportunity through calling a, you had the purview-
I'm gonna recall, I'm gonna recall my time now. So, so, so you had a chance to speak, there are other commissioners that wanted to speak, you had a point of clarification, you've made your clarification. Does anyone else wish to speak on the item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, um, you know, considering the strategic session that we had today, um, am I mistaken that there's a potential for another ballot question for the March 25th?
It's entirely possible. That's up to the City Commission.
And hence, we were given staff a sense of urgency in order to get information back to us for that reason.
That's how I recall it, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anything else? Anyone else wanna speak on this item?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, um, I, I will say that although in general, in a general sense, I usually prefer to have ballot items on a ballot that has the highest number of voters. I also understand that this has been worked, the Charter Review Committee did not meet in '24. They met a year ago, if I'm not mistaken. And they finished up-
September.
Uh, manager, Mr. Manager, was it, when was it that they actually, uh, finished their, their meetings?
September of '23.
September of '23, so it's been some time, um, and, and I won't be, uh, supporting the, the motion on the floor right now.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The motion dies four to one. Okay, so all of these items will be in March, and what is your pleasure on number nine? Uh, City, uh, City Attorney, if you would read it into the record?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, give me just a second.
Uh, can I, can I interrupt the, uh, City Attorney for a moment?
Sure.
Mayor, we have to have a resolution to have an election in March. I think, I think it's misstated that if, if, if the commit, if this commission decides to have, uh, a ballot in, in March of 2025, that is a separate item, and if this item were to pass, it is the, uh, it is the intent of the commission to place these items on the March ballot.
The City Attorney knows what he has to do.
But I, but this, the, the public needs to know that there, there was this, there's a reading specifically for that ballot language, and, and this should've been a standalone, but that's okay.
Okay. The City Attorney knows what he has to do in order to get us through. You may read, uh, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Item number nine, for the record, is the first of the eight items. It reads as follows, "An ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida submitting to referendum amendments to the charter of the city of Pembroke Pines at Article Four entitled Administration, and in particular amending Section 4.03 referenced as acting city manager pertaining to the appointment and removal of the acting city manager, providing that this ordinance, when adopted, shall be submitted to the qualified electors of the city of Pembroke Pines in a special election to be conducted with the March 11, 2025 municipal election, and it shall become effective as provided for by law, providing for the advertising of the referendum election, providing for codification, providing for conflict severability, and providing for an effective date. And for the record, this is the item which modifies Section 4.03, um, which, on a quick explanation, if I may, or through Mr. Morgan or Mr. Cirillo, uh, essentially reduces the four-fifths vote to a three-fifths vote to, uh, remove an acting city manager."
Yes, sir. Okay, is there a motion on the item?
Motion to approve.
Vice Mayor moves the item, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez, any discussion? Hearing none, any from the public? Clerk will call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes. Thank you very much, and by your vote, this passes on first reading. When is second reading of these items?
Nothing yet, Mayor, but the clerk can perhaps give you some, some optional dates. As we know for the record and to reiterate what we discussed on the public, uh, record before, the supervisory elections will require these ordinances in hand by the end of this year, uh, to be able to seek ballot access in the March election, which is, uh, the, the his deadline, subject to the notice of a calling of an election, which would occur probably in the month of December.
Okay, thank you very much. Item ten, if you would read, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Number ten is also an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida submitting housekeeping amendments to the charter of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending Article Three, referenced as legislature, Section 3.09 as prohibitions, amending Section, uh, Article Four, administration, uh, Section 4.04, powers and duties of the city manager, Section 4.05, reference the city clerk, deputy city clerk, Section 4.07, city attorney, Section 4.11, procurement, Section 4.13, commission auditor, amending Article Five, referenced as the budget at Section 5.06, when contracts and expenditures are prohibited, amending Article Six, initiative and referendum, Section 6.02, commencement of proceedings, Section 6.03, petitions, Section 6.04, procedure for filing, amending Article Eight, entitled general limitations, Section 8.05, conflicting charter amendments, and amending Article Nine, transition schedule at Section 9.02, references ordinances preserved, providing for codification, providing for conflict severability, providing for an effective date. As a reference point, Mayor and Commission, this is the one item in the list of the items before you that does not require voter approval, as you note in the title, it references that is a housekeeping amendment, which was discussed during the last meeting of the commission. On the floor, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, sir.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Hernandez. Is there any further discussion on the item?
A question for the City Attorney, uh, City Attorney-
Commissioner Schwartz, you're recognized.
This is not a mark, this is not a ballot initiative, correct?
Correct.
Can you do this right now?
Correct. And we opined during the meeting at which these items were directed to our office to prepare, we indicated that we believe, based upon our review, the Attorney General's opinions and applicable case law, that they were not substantive, in fact, were deemed as being non-substantive, not requiring that to occur.
Okay, any further discussion on item ten? Any from the public? Seeing none? Seeing none? Clerk will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, and this item passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and it will be coming back on second reading. Item number eleven, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Next up, item number eleven, which does require voter approval, and it reads as follows, "It is an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida submitting to referendum amendments to the charter of the city of Pembroke Pines at Article Four entitled Administration, and in particular amending Section 4.01 referenced the city manager to expand the city manager duties, providing that this ordinance, when adopted, shall be submitted to the qualified electors of the city of Pembroke Pines in a special election to be conducted with the March 11, 2025 municipal election, and it shall become effective as provided for by law, providing for the advertising of the referendum election, providing for codification, providing for conflict severability, and providing for an effective date. And for the record, Mayor and Commission, this item references the, the condition and the addition of the, of the verbiage, uh, joining to the city manager's duties and responsibilities, the superintendent of the city-owned charter schools founded at Section 4.01 in the charter. And if you have any questions, we can respond accordingly as to how it was drafted."
Motion to approve.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hernandez, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, any from the public? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez? Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, and by your vote, this item will, uh, proceed to second reading at the appropriate time. Number twelve-
Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number twelve is a referendum question. It's an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida submitting to referendum amendments to the charter of the city of Pembroke Pines, that's at Article Four entitled Administration, and in particular amending Section 4.02, references city manager appointment, removal, compensation pertaining to appointment and removal of future, of future city managers, providing that this ordinance, when adopted, shall be submitted to the qualified electors of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, in a special election to be conducted with the March 11, 2025 municipal election, and it shall become effective as provided for by law, providing for the advertising of the referendum election, providing for codification, conflict severability, and providing for an effective date. And as a quick premise to the Mayor and Commission, this particular question relates to the specific issue of reducing the four-fifths vote to higher and terminate the services of the city manager from a three-fifths vote to a, from a four-fifths vote to a three-fifths vote. The key factor, if you will, Mayor and Commission, if you look at page four or five of the ordinance, the effective day- the effective date of the ordinance, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon adoption by the city commission and signature by the mayor and shall be submitted to referendum and set forth herein, provided, however, that should the referendum be approved by the, approved, the charter amendment shall not apply to the current city manager. And that was at the direction of the commission, was to define the appropriate language, which would, um, honor and respect the, uh, city manager currently in position.
Motion to approve.
Is a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Commissioner Rodriguez?
I just wanted, I guess, clarification from the board as well, that we're aware that it was future, because from the last conversation we had, I don't remember us setting this specifically for future. I, I remember it was mentioned, but I don't know where we all kind of fell on that.
I don't recall the conversation at all. But it's, it's before us now, and it's up to, uh, the board as to whether you want to include that clause or not. It can be removed by motion, or it can be adopted the way it is, or it can be reconsidered at second reading. It's entirely your pleasure.
I'll take time and, and.
It, you, it can be changed at, 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 at any time before second reading, uh, well, at second reading. After that, it's before the voters. Okay. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. Any from the public? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes. And by your vote, this item passes on first reading. Number thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Number thirteen is also an ordinance regarding, regarding referendum questions. It's an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida submitting to referendum amendments to the charter of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, at Article Four entitled Administration, and in particular amending Section 4.03 as the acting city manager pertaining to appointment of the acting city manager during absence or incapacity, providing that this ordinance, when adopted, shall be submitted to the qualified electors of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, in a special election to be conducted with the March eleven, twenty-twenty-five municipal election, uh, and it shall become effective as provided for by law, providing for the advertising of the referendum election, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. If you will, Mayor and Commission, just a quick primer on the item, 4.03, the charter would be amended once, if this is adopted by the commission as an ordinance and submitted to the ref, to the voters of the city, it would actually delete the word disability from the current charter and would insert the word as directed by the commission after significant debate on the dais to the word incapacity. And then for the purpose of this section, incapacity shall mean the inability of the city manager to perform the duties of his or her office. Those are the prospective changes, deletion of disability, inserting of the word incapacity, and subjecting to the city commission the definition and the, um, the findings of fact that would be required under Section 4.03. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Motion to approve.
That's moved by the vice mayor. Is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, the, um, the Charter Review Board was invoked a couple times, um, uh, prior to this round of voting. Uh, they took up, um, some of these questions, and they did not make recommendations, uh, favorable recommendations to make changes, specifically on the, uh, on the four fifths down to three fifths. The Charter Review Board.
We're not on that item.
The, the citizens that we had, uh, appointed, um, didn't come to that conclusion, nor, uh, did they, uh, were given the opportunity to debate, uh, the questions that were, um, that were in front of us. Uh, therefore, I'm voting no.
Okay. Uh, before we proceed, Ms. City Attorney, on number twelve, since Commissioner Herna, uh, Rodriguez asked that question, could you memo the entire commission, please, and, uh, uh, explain to us where the, uh, that new language, uh, had come from?
With regard at the, um, uh, disability, uh, incapacity versus disability?
No, no, no. On, on item twelve.
We will look for it.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, where, where, where that, uh, added, uh, item about the current, uh, came from? Just memo us.
We, we will do that.
All right? Because I, I wanna make sure that Commissioner, uh, Rodriguez's, uh, question, uh, is settled before, uh, before she or any of us vote on the next item. Okay, back to, uh, the item before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Any from the public? Seeing none. The clerk will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes. And by your vote, this item passes on, uh, uh, first reading, and it will come back to us on second reading. Item thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number thirteen. Number thirteen, for the record, is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida submitting to referendum amendments to the charter of the City of Pembroke Pines at Article, we just did that one, did we not?
We did that one.
We did that one.
I'm sorry, item fourteen.
I'm sorry. Close enough.
My, my bad.
Not to worry. I believed you. Uh, item number fourteen is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida submitting to referendum amendments to the charter of the City of Pembroke Pines at Article Four entitled Administration, and in particular amending Section 4.01 city manager regarding city manager's qualifications, providing that this ordinance, when adopted, shall be submitted to the qualified electors of the City of Pembroke Pines in a special election to be conducted with, with the March eleven, twenty-twenty-five municipal election, and it shall become effective as provided for by law, providing for the advertising of the referendum election, providing for codification, providing for conflict severability, and providing for an effective date. The quick squib on this one, Mayor and Commission, at Section 4.1 as directed by the commission, if you look at sec, subsection three of 4.01 qualifications, the city manager shall have a bachelorate degree, or baccalaureate, depending what part of the country you're from, and three years of experience as a city manager or assistant city manager with the addition of the following language, or three years of comparable or comparable experience as may be determined by the city commission. Those are added language and added words by the commission, as was included in the motion at the last meeting when we directed to draft. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
The item is moved by the vice mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Charter Review Board did take up this item. Uh, they chose, uh, not to make changes to the language, uh, with the qualifications. Uh, the, uh, this dais modified the language that did come out of committee. I'll be voting no.
Yeah. As, as, as we all know, this dais has the authority to modify the language, but the Charter Review Board did not recommend that specific change. It was done by the city commission. Okay. Is there any further discussion on the item? Any from the public? Any from the public? Seeing none. Clerk will call the roll on first reading.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
It was a no.
No? Okay.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes. And by a four-one vote, this item is passed on, uh, uh, first reading, and it will come back to us on second reading. Item number fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number fifteen is the following, "An ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida submitting to referendum amendments to the charter of the City of Pembroke Pines at Article Four entitled Administration, and in particular amending Section 4.02 city manager appointment, removal, compensation pertaining to removal of hearing process, hearing process for the removal of the city manager, providing that this ordinance, when adopted, shall be submitted to the qualified electors of the City of Pembroke Pines in a special election to be conducted with the March eleven, twenty-twenty-five municipal election, and it shall become effective as provided for by law, providing for the advertising of the referendum election, providing for codification, providing for conflict severability, and providing for an effective date. Just the quick squib on this one, Mayor and Commission, this is the codification change to Section 4.02, which deletes the bulk of Article of, of 4.02 subsection B regarding the, um, request for a hearing by the manager, essentially, uh, striking through the provisions of subsection B in great part, subsection B one, B two, and leaving the balance of that provision, uh, as is. You will probably ask the question, uh, that the, um, language in 4.02 still makes reference to the four fifths language, and the reason is, and perhaps I can defer to Mr. Quentin Morgan to just brief the commission, the reason that this does not say three fifths is because, we want you to hear this on the record, if you will, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, uh, for, uh.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commission, thank you for giving me a couple minutes. Uh, the, the difference in the ordinances, each ordinance stands alone, so you all, as well as the voters, if it gets to that point, have the ability to adopt or not adopt in any individual ordinance that we are hearing tonight. So, the ordinance that, in, in this particular case, that has the three fif, four fifths still in it, may or may not pass under the other ordinance, which requires a new four fifths vote, or a three fifths vote. So, each ordinance stands on its own. So, this particular section is being eliminated for the hearing process. The other ordinance that you heard earlier changes the vote from the four fifths to the three fifths. So, there will be separate ballot questions for changing the vote number from four fifths to three fifths, and a sep, and a question for removal of the hearing process.
I see. So, in other words, so in other words, we're not changing the four fifths because the four fifths is being covered under another ballot question?
Correct.
The three fifths.
Correct.
And so, once that one is done, then this one automatically changes?
No, sir. This one may, the voters may decide if, if it passes through the commission at second reading, that they'd like to have that hearing process for the removal of the city manager.
No, 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 no. I'm, what I'm saying is, if the three fifths vote by the, by the electorate and this vote both pass, it changes the four fifths in this vote to three fifths.
Correct. The char, the charter will be reconciled into one solid policy document, uh, the constitution of the city. So, it, it will all read as the voters pass.
In other words, wherever the four fifths is mentioned, the vote on the three fifths changes it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is everybody, is everybody clear on it?
Understood.
I'm clear. That was a question I had for Sam the other day, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's, uh, not.
Motion to approve.
Yo, yo. Okay. Um, the motion is made by the, by the vice mayor, was seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Any further discussion on this item? Commissioner Schwartz.
The, uh, Charter Review Board specifically, uh, wanted to have the hearing remain. Uh, this commission, uh, removed that option.
Yes. Uh, as I recall, that's correct, Commissioner. As I recall, we all, we all talked about how this hearing that is, uh, contained in, uh, in the, in the charter would never practically happen.
Again.
Because, uh, and then, and that was the consensus of our.
It wasn't the consensus. I objected. The consensus would be unanimous. I objected to it.
No, consensus can be a majority. And, uh, the, um, uh, but what it, what it can never do is remove from any employee, Mr. City Ma, uh, Mr. City Attorney, correct me if I'm mistaken, uh, any remedy that they may have under employment law. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, um, any, any remedy that they have under employment law will continue to be there, but this notion of a special hearing for, uh, uh, for that purpose, uh, would be eliminated. That, that's, that was the consensus and direction of the board.
Okay. That certainly wasn't, wasn't something I was favoring, but city attorney, where's the forty-eight hour rule, uh, noted in this ordinance so that we don't have a, a new business item and a, and a, and a quick hook of, of a city manager on the commission night?
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, could you respond to that?
Again, the forty-eight hour rule is a, is a county charter provision which applies in every city in Broward County. It, it's preemptive of anything that could be done in the city, and it requires that, that an agenda posting with regard to an item before the commission, before the public, it needs to be on the website and available in a published fashion within forty-eight hours of a commission meeting, and that did not change. But it, there's nothing in these ordinances that would delete, diminish, or otherwise implicate the forty-eight hour rule.
Educating the public, though. Where would that, where would that, uh, someone walks into the ballot box, they don't know about the Broward County forty-eight hour rule, uh, what, what, what can be done in ballot language that would give, uh, a voter as much education as possible about it?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I can respond favorably, but what, but the, the customary traditional answer to, to what the law says is that people are presumed to know what the law is, and the law applies because it, it does. In Broward County, it was voted on by the qualified electors several years ago, and the city follows it in its adoption of any, not just ordinances and resolutions, but anything that's available to pub, for public consumption is required to be posted and available. Uh, as you know, there may be emergencies that occur, uh, so long as there's something in the record on, on the website and otherwise available publicly, it can be amended between the posting and the actual meeting, but the forty-eight hour rule is an umbrella over anything that local government can do.
Now, does the, uh, uh, does the mayor of Pembroke Pines have the authority to declare a special meeting inside the forty-eight hours to give the hook to a charter officer?
The, the, the answer is that, that the forty-eight hour rule applies.
So, the answer is yes.
The answer is that forty-eight hours does apply to the extent that it must be in advert, unless there's an emergency.
Uh, I, City Attorney, I'm asking specifically, can, uh, can a mayor, can a mayor of Pembroke Pines call a special election?
Special meeting.
Special meeting, uh, to, um, to terminate a charter officer? Does that qualify as a, uh, under, under the, under the rules, under the ordinances and laws of Broward County? Is that, is that possible?
The answer is that if the mayor of Pembroke Pines were to call a special meeting under the city code and city charter, he would have to comply with the county forty-eight hour rule.
You're not answering my question. Like, what?
I, I don't know how, how much clearer he can be.
Because our charter says that, that, that the mayor can call a special meeting.
He said, the mayor can call a special meeting in the case of, of an emergency without forty-eight hours' notice. Otherwise, the mayor, who's never considered this, uh, uh, would have to follow the forty-eight hour rule. Okay? Anything further on this, on this item? Anything from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Commissioner Schwartz? No.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes. And by your vote, uh, this will go to a second reading at the appropriate time. Uh, item number seventeen, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Last but not least, is item sixteen, also a referendum.
Sixteen, I'm sorry.
Sixteen, correct. This is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida submitting to referendum amendments to the charter of the City of Pembroke Pines at Article Three entitled Legislature, and in particular amending Section 3.11 referenced as vacancies, forfeiture of office, filling of vacancies, providing that this ordinance, when adopted, shall be submitted to the qualified electors of the City of Pembroke Pines in a special election to be conducted with the March eleven, twenty-twenty-five municipal election, and it shall become effective as provided for by law, providing for the advertising of the referendum election, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and Commission, with your permission, uh, may I ask, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, uh, my law partner and assistant city attorney, Mr. Cirillo, give you a, a briefing on the language in Section 3.11? It is, it is, it is substantive, and is also responsive to the direction, discussion, and motion that was adopted by the commission for us to draft, and with your concurrence and for indulgence to allow the public record to reflect the analysis with this, with your permission, I'd like him to present briefly.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, Michael Cirillo with the attorney's office. Just to go briefly through it, this, this ordinance is updating and clarifying the vacancy procedures. Um, you might recall some of the issues that are being addressed in here were issues that the city commission wrestled with at the end of last year. Um, there's some clarification on the effective date of a vacancy in the event of a resignation. on the effective date of a vacancy in the event of a resignation. The timing to appoint a vacancy shall be as soon as practicable, and then it provides for how you schedule a special election, the timeframes for that, including those timeframes for qualification periods, to be generally the same amount of times before an election as they typically would be for a regular city municipal election. So, it basically just addresses the issues in the vacancy process that were identified, either through the Board, the Charter Review Commission, or through our experiences this past year.
And this removes from the City Commission the ability to playfully set up, well, let me say, unusually set up qualification periods and such things. It sets it clear.
The direction we got was to provide language that the qualifying period shall be in a timeframe generally the same as would be before a regular election would be, right?
So, so this business of unusual qualification period that we had in the last Commission would disappear under this.
If this passes, yes.
Okay, thanks. Any further discussion on the item?
Mayor, if I can, go quickly. Mike, also highlight, if you will, the Subsection D on the conversion of the word "may" to "shall." That's an important factor under Subsection D, where the proposed change now would say, "Filling of vacancies unless otherwise provided for by law." If a vacancy occurs on the City Commission, the remaining members of the City Commission shall, deleting the word "may," by majority vote, appoint a qualified individual to fill the vacancy on an interim basis, adding the language as soon as practicable after the date of the vacancy, as Mike indicated earlier. So, the predicatory word of "may" has now been made a mandate of "shall" due. So, there's an obligation, a firm duty on the part of the Commission to make that appointment.
But we still have to select the means by resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion's made by the Vice Mayor to approve. Is there a second?
I'm going to second, and if I could make a comment when you...
Yes, sir. There's a second by Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Hernandez, you are recognized.
I wanted to thank also Commissioner Rodriguez, because she mentioned the part, when our discussion, as I remember it, on qualifying periods, the way that I view it is, there will be a vacancy on this board at some time in the future. We don't know when or who, but I feel strongly that we should have a process that is in our Charter that says someone needs to be appointed. I believe it's like around 45,000 residents that each of us represents. If there's a vacancy, those 45,000 go unrepresented. And I think, especially from the learning experience, it was riveting, four hours in court with our city attorneys regarding the supervisors, the legal matter we brought before the supervisor. It's very clear that what we've done in the past, I believe it was three special elections that were in August, that that's not going to be an option anymore under this supervisor, and therefore, I think we needed to put language into the Charter about an appointment process. So, I'd appreciate support for this.
I think that that's a point well taken, and I congratulate you both for bringing it forward. I feel very, very certain that the residents of Pembroke Pines will embrace this and put that kind of history as we've had behind us. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Schwartz?
I believe wholeheartedly that the actions taken by Supervisor Scott departs from every other supervisor election in the history of Broward County. Therefore, if either Supervisor Scott comes to a reasonable form of clarity, he will give municipalities like ours the option to have elections when we need them. So, that is a function of a constitutional officer, and to change our Charter based upon one's opinion, I think, is quite dangerous. I'll be voting no.
If I could respond briefly. I was in court that day. I sat there with our attorneys, Mr. Sterns, with everybody. The supervisor was on direct and cross-examination, very clear. You could read the record. Very clear. "I will not grant any city ballot access other than March or November." Mr. Gordon and others brought up examples. He listed specific instances. There was, I believe, the death of a mayor or someone in office. I think it's Lighthouse Point. I'm not sure which town it was. He got his facts mixed up, but the point was, there was a death in office. So, I just disagree, having sat there for those hours. I disagree that there's any opportunity to say to him, "Well, maybe it's better to have an election in August." I don't agree with that.
You misheard what I said. At some point, he either has a moment of clarity, or he's no longer in office.
My, okay, no longer in office, I understand, but a moment of clarity. He was very, very clear under direct and cross-examination in that courtroom. He was very clear.
If I might insert, he was also very clear that we were free to run our own election.
Therefore, this is unnecessary, that?
Well...
If that's the point, Mayor, if we can run our own election, why have the Charter?
I don't know that that's practical. I honestly don't know that that's practical.
Is it because...
But I'm not adverse at some future moment to take a look at that. However, I'm not, I don't believe that that's practical. However, he did offer that option, and the record would be unclear if it wasn't made complete.
So, just to follow up on that point...
Excuse me. The Commissioner Rodriguez has the floor.
I think I'd just like to say, maybe for the record, maybe if anybody ever hears this, but he is countywide elected. I think we need to understand that we get elected to make certain choices, and whether everybody else approves of it or doesn't approve of it, there are certain powers that come with certain kinds of offices, and I think we were all right to have kind of gone through and done what we did, because it was, we took an oath to this city, but he took an oath to his office, and if he thought that was the prerogative that he wanted to take, you know, he has the power to do that, and for us to kind of continue to belabor the point, I think, makes, you know, little sense. He's the countywide elected person, and if people decide to say otherwise in a future election, so be it, but I don't think we need to kind of continue harping on it. He has certain powers that, obviously, the court sided with him.
Another option is to join together with other cities and go to Tallahatchie and have that law changed, in which case the discretion is removed. It's entirely possible that any legislature would readily agree that if a state has three sanctioned elections in March, August, and November, there really isn't any logical reason to keep them from accessing any of them, particularly with something as important as filling a vacancy in the event of death or resignation. So, I mean, that's certainly an option that falls to cities, and if that suggestion comes forward in the form of advocacy, I certainly will support it, because that's what the city should do when they feel that they're being abused. You go to the principal's office. So, you know, I think that that's something that we should talk about at some point. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none. Any from the public? Hearing none. The clerk will please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez? Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, and by your vote, this item will now go to second reading at the appropriate time. Item 17, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Number 17 for the record is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2024-24. On first reading, it is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending ordinance number 2007, providing for an amended budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024 for the City Pembroke Pines, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. Item number 17 on the floor for consideration, Mayor and Commission. Thank you.
Is there a motion on the item?
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Rodriguez. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Discussion on this item. Seeing none. Any from the public? Seeing none. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
I didn't second.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, and by your unanimous vote, this item will now go to second reading at the appropriate time. Resolutions?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Number 18 for the public record and for public comment, it's appropriate, is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2024-R-44, which is a proposed resolution of the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and authorizing the execution of the utility work by highway contractor agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation in an amount not to exceed 375,936.20, directing the appropriate city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution, directing the city clerk to transmit a copy of the resolution to the Florida Department of Transportation, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and last but not least, providing for an effective date. Item number 18 on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor and Commission, 18.
Is there a motion on the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion on the item? Hearing none. Any from the public? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
I have to go with...
Okay, so, that motion is unanimous.
For the record, Mayor and Commission, the permanent number for that resi, for those who need to have it, is 38843884. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item on regular agenda. Any, I see none. Reports of the League Representatives. Commissioner Rodriguez first?
No, no reports, other than we're going to be going in, sorry, I'm going to be going in November, I think, right after the election, to Tampa for the National League, for the national conference.
Okay. She's rooting for the National League. I'm rooting for the American. Commissioner Schwartz, any items on the League?
The League postponed the meeting because of Harakeem Milton, so no business was conducted this month. We do have associate night, though, tomorrow.
All the humanities. Reports of the City Manager?
No, I haven't seen it.
Thank you so much. Reports of the City Attorney?
Nothing on the record this evening, Mayor, to the extent I can brief you on some pending litigation. I'll do so individually and privately, but nothing to be alarmed about. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Do you want to brief us now, or at another time?
Just quickly, Judge Hames, I attended a hearing before him last week. He's the judge in the Con Ed case. I'm just waiting for the stipulation to be circulated by the lawyers so that we can get it signed and get the city. It's 2.6 million. You don't have the money yet. I'm anticipating getting it sometime very soon. It is the primary obligation for Con Ed to pay. There are probably five or six insurers involved, and they want the money from the insurers to be able to pay the city. We want it from Con Ed. We want a check. We want it now. So, it's moving in the right direction. And last but not least, through the assistance of Lisa Chung today, the settlement check with regard to the Calix case was received by the surety, correct, Ms. Lisa? Yes, and that case will go away. It will be dismissed. The city will be released, and the city will move on in its professional life thereafter. Other than that, we're currently still on appeal on the Hollywood case, and we'll be giving you some briefs on that fairly soon.
Okay. Before we proceed, Assistant City Attorney Morgan, I want to thank you for the work that you did with the Charter Review Board. Very thorough, very outstandingly done, and you have the thanks and appreciation of City Commissioners, sir. Thank you very, very much for your work. Okay, City Commission Items. The item 19, Commissioner Hernandez, you are recognized.
It was, we discussed it, obviously, in strategic planning. It's just, and if I could, we don't have to motion it. I don't know the proper way, but I'd like to work with the City Manager and our team whenever there's resurfacing, repaving projects, how to set up basically a checklist process for the administration and how they are to work with HOAs. I identified a couple of issues. I think our city did outstanding job. Our contractor did outstanding jobs, but I think if we can memorialize or formalize a process, it'll result in a lot fewer calls from the HOA to a representative, whether it's the mayor, myself, or any Commission member, just because there needs to be a little bit better communication when the process is happening, especially something as challenging as a resurfacing project, where you're requiring folks to move their vehicles, different times of the day that you can or cannot, after the resurfacing, have your vehicles on the streets, et cetera, et cetera. So, I don't need to motion it. I just, I would like to work with the manager and his team to make sure we put something together, and if we have to bring it back legally, obviously, I'll follow the rules, but...
Well, typically, it's without objection, so ordered, but Commissioner Rodriguez, you wish to speak?
I think we mentioned a little bit earlier, but I think specifically for a project like that, text messages would go a long way, because it's something that you kind of have to have a little bit more in your face to know when you've got to move your cars, and it's just a little bit more easy access for the residents.
Yeah, on the text, I'd like to figure that out, because is it, we have to enroll, right? These residents would have to enroll in...
So, it depends. From my perspective, I've done it for, obviously, for campaigns and things like that, so it might be a little bit different as to what rules we can follow, and that might be something that we can get the Attorney's Office to help us out on, but as mentioned, we can ask either Joe Scott or any other database, I would assume, would have, you know, either Marty's office. I don't know how much they can kind of give away, and that might be something to look into, but I know on a personal capacity, you can kind of, you can purchase that information from our supervisor of election, so.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Our sandwich boards
Yep.
are highly effective, and dropping it in front of an HOA gate advising that repaving is going to occur, and these are the dates, and these are the times, if we need to include it as part of bid specs before jobs are started, so be it. If there's a cost to that, and the contractor needs to pay for those things, no different than any land developer has to pay for the cost of those sandwich boards for rezoning. I think we have a process in place that could be a lot more effective than a mail campaign, or a text campaign, or email campaign. I think sticking it in front of the community, letting them know that paving is going to happen, and they need to, you know, act accordingly. I do believe it is a valid point to coordinate with the HOAs, and Commissioner Hernandez, generally what happens when a project is happening that's going to impact one of mine, staff will let me know, and I'll do my own outreach, and it's usually...
No, and...
...decimated that way.
Well, just a point of clarification, because this happened in the neighborhood I live in a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yes, they can put up boards. The problem is, there's rain, so the project that was supposed to begin Labor Day weekend was delayed until middle of September. What I'm asking for, I'm fine with sandwich boards. I'm fine with however, but I saw that there was frustration. I live in a subdivision that has its own local HOA, and then I have the master, which is Chapel Trail, and the master, for example, was calling me because that massive equipment that is needed for repaving was not through the city's issue. It was the contractor, was parked in a sensitive area that could have damaged irrigation. So, I think that there needs to be more than just a sandwich board. It has to be very, very comprehensive communication between the city, the contractor, and the HOA, because then we can identify prior to, the city was communicating with me just fine. I think we need to formalize the process, because, for example, the contractor probably could have been told by the master HOA maintenance folks, "These are the areas you cannot place your vehicles." The master HOA in Chapel Trail sent the contractor a bill for close to $4,000 today. I saw it in an email. So, that's what I'm really trying to identify. Is there a better way that we can formalize a process where there is more one-on-one discussion between, "Do you have a local HOA like I do?" Great, but also with the master HOA. The work is great. It's communication and being able to say, "Do not park your vehicles there." The city's Contractor Weekly was out there today to fix areas that were damaged as a result of where they placed their vehicles. I appreciate that, but I just think we need to, the process needs to be better. The master HOA and my subdivision HOA both were asking me to speak to the city.
Commissioner Hernandez, by ordinance, the HOAs are required to be registered with the clerk's office, specifically this issue. Your paving project and mine on the east side were happening generally at the same time. They got Phase 1 in Pembroke Lakes completed, but because of rain, they had to stop. So, the difference is that Chapel Trail has the ability to be an HOA that can email all those folks, but in Pembroke Lakes, I don't have anybody to do that. Therefore, sandwich boards are necessary in order to communicate for those areas. So, I agree, a process should be in place. We do have an ordinance already required by the HOAs to be up to date with the clerk.
Okay.
So, that should resolve that.
Okay, points well taken, and I appreciate it. The request was for Commissioner Hernandez to work with the administration on the item, and without objection, so ordered. Is there any objection? Okay, that's so ordered. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Is there anything else, sir?
No.
Okay. New business? Any new business? Any old business? With that, we're going to move to adjourn. Thank you very, very much, and we'll see you next time.